Order, um, if you all could please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. For emergency issues only, is there any school committee members additions to the agenda? No, there is a conversation about milk, but, alright. So, with the consent of the committee, I would like to hold off on public comment until after the presentation. Is that okay with folks? Okay. So, public comment, we're just gonna let you hear what's said first and then do your public comment. So, Brian, we have our fiscal year 26 budget discussion.
Alright, thank you for showing up tonight, appreciate it. I know it's kinda threw us off being here on a Thursday and a Tuesday, but thank you for coming in. I just wanna start with some background.
It should be recorded.
Alright, and how we got here. Inflation has risen faster than the school budget over the past 10 years. Though enrollment has declined, student needs have increased. Even as the cost of meeting those needs has increased, inflation has eroded the buying power of the educational dollar. The district has found efficiencies in savings to offset the lack of funding, but there is a limit past this can no longer be possible. The impact of inflation, between 2015 and 2025, the school department budget rose 24... Oh, why didn't someone say something? 24.73 percent. Other towns' department budgets rose 43.33 percent. Inflation rose 37.34 percent. So, educational spending has lagged inflation by a large margin. The impact of inflation. School funding in FY '26 is currently set to increase by $659,227. This is not enough to cover the $815,000 just in health insurance. And I wanna be clear on that. We are getting above, not to anybody's fault, $659,000 in health insurance with $815,000 increase in health insurance. With costs rising so quickly, Belch Town's tax revenue is not sufficient to continue operating as normal. In 2015, the school budget was to 26 million. To get the same buying power at a 37.34 percent inflation, the FY '25 budget would have had to be the $36,529,000. But in FY '25, that wasn't the budget. The actual budget was $33,185,396 for a shortfall of the $3 million. And we keep talking about what's the future gonna be. So, we anticipate FY '26, it's gonna be worse. The good news, and we've been saying this for a long time, due to cost savings and efficiencies, schools are not... Oh, sorry, I'll skip out. What I was gonna say is, the good news is, we've been doing very well. Big return investment with the educators here for the town. Also, due to the cost savings and efficiency, schools are not asking for the $3.34 million needed to keep pace with inflation. I talked about this the other day in the budget presentation. Even as inflation has eroded the buying power of the school budget, costs have gone up. Taken in isolation, overall enrollment's not a good way to focus on educational costs. Massachusetts schools are required by law to provide costly services to students with special needs, and these populations have increased since 2010. Early English Language Arts, English Language Arts. English Language Learners, 400 percent increase. Students with disability, 18 percent increase. Pre-K students, 237 percent increase. And students with autism, 129 percent increase. Why haven't budgets kept pace with the inflation? In Massachusetts, towns can increase taxes by 2.5 percent per year. When inflation is higher than the 2.5 percent, as it's been in recent years, municipalities struggle to provide the same services as they did in the past. However, citizens can vote to increase taxes so that the spending, the spending on important services can keep pace with inflation. This is the tax override that everybody's talking about and is going to be on the town meeting and possibly a ballot. So, does the district need $3.38 million? No. To match the buying power of the 2015 school budget, the schools would have needed an additional $3.38 million in FY '25. However, the district has been effective at cutting costs and redeploying its limited funds to areas of increased need. This is evident by the per pupil expenditure in Belchertown, one of the lowest in the states. Belchertown taxpayers are already getting an excellent value on their educational investment. The district is proud of its success in keeping costs low, and it intends to continue the practice of responsible fiscal stewardship. How has the district cut costs in the past? We talked about this as well. We have taken steps to cut costs, raise revenue, redirect savings from less needed to more needed services. A few examples. Closed K-6 general education homerooms as enrollment declined. Between 2012 and 2025, overall enrollment declined 18.9 percent, and the number of homerooms declined 18.3 percent. Eliminated teaching positions at Javish Brook last year, the English, the math, the science, the social studies. We're continuing to pursue competitive grants to compensate for the underfunding, and we encourage teachers to fund innovative projects through the BEF. And we thank them every day. Raised revenues by increasing bus fees and athletic fees. We charge graduates for their caps and gowns now. Oh, good, good, good thing. A-plus. Raised revenue by opening school choice seats. We understand this is a controversial practice. That generates funds, but it also increases costs. We get that, we understand that, but we're trying. We brought a HVAC maintenance in-house instead of contracting it out. We upgraded LED lights to reduce the electric bills. We moved a custodian from the general budget to the food service. We transitioned staff and students from expensive PCs to cheaper Chromebooks. We're currently implementing an online registration and form submission to reduce mailing costs. We're closing Tagil, we're relocating IT and hardware to Belchertown High School. So, how much does the district need? Well, it would have taken the $3.38 million in FY '25 to get the same buying power the district had in 2015. The district believes it can move forward with an override of $1,636,236. This figure allows us to preserve the majority of current services in FY '26 and incorporate some new savings that we had the last couple of weeks. A retirement related to the reorganization of IT. We talked about that when I presented the first time around. We're gonna do some reorganization in IT. We're getting rid of an administrator in IT. We have some reassignments of two teachers in the district. A reduction in projected number of outplacements. This was kinda like our big savings. And I'll show you in the... I'll show you down the road. You know how we always talk about auto-tuition? Well, we got notice about a week and a half ago, and then a week ago, that a number of students that we were going to place out of district are actually going back to their home districts. So, we don't have to pay for that. So, that's gonna be a savings for us. So, that was a little blessing in disguise, I guess. I got the official word that we are going to reduce a bus. So, we're gonna do that. And then the projected savings cost of closing Tagil. So, once again, I just wanna repeat. It's the restructuring of IT, that's an administrative position. We're going, there's some retirements, we're gonna reassign two staff members. So, we're not filling those positions. The outplacements of special education students. And the other word I got was the bus. So, that was $89,000 cost savings. And then the project for Tagil. So, that brings down our, what was in the initial budget that we presented, the 2.1. We're actually bringing that down to 1,636,200. Yeah, 1,636, and then the 2.36. Thank you. So, how would this money be spent in FY '26? The additional $1,600,000 would be used to address immediate funding crisis by doing the following. It will ensure the continuation of performing arts, sports, and extracurriculars. Maintain class sizes that we have today. Prevent support for student needs by preventing 30-plus layoffs, most of which are teacher-student facing roles. We have cut and cut and cut in the last five years of non-facing, student-facing roles. Temporarily maintain the current grade and school configuration, and that will allow us to explore regionalization, any reductions, or the reorganization. How would this money be spent beyond FY '26? Beyond that, the district intends to continue the history of successful cost-saving measures, a history that has led the Belchertown having among the lowest pupil expenditure in Massachusetts. These steps may include closure of Cold Springs, consolidating, you know, the four schools, redeploying any savings to fund other initiative and address the growing population of students with special needs, specific needs. ELL students, once again, disabled students, students needing academic interventions, and it goes on. Does this solve the problem forever? If you ask us, we don't believe so. If town departments receive unequal budget increases each year, we'll find ourselves in the same situation several years from now. But we do believe there is a solution. Some Massachusetts towns have a policy of budgeting the same amount of the inflation rate across all town departments. This will equally equip all to address the pressures that we need to deal with about the inflation rate, and that departments don't end up fighting each other over funding. A similar policy in Belchertown would help all departments on the same team allow us to better cooperate and address the challenges of the future. A neighboring town has this policy as well, and it's working very well for them. What's the alternative? Without an override, there will be a large shortfall to the district's level service budget in FY '26. There will also be shortfalls in each year afterwards, as towns' revenue will be insufficient to fund educational services. Despite the district's success in containing costs in the past, it cannot, it cannot find savings that preserve important services at this funding level. With no override, what services would be lost in FY '26? I mentioned this the other day at the first budget hearing we had. The elimination of 30-plus positions, reduction in instructional materials and supplies, reduction in professional development offerings, reduction in extracurricular, closure of the CHCS pool, eliminate, we talked about the elimination of a school bus, and then the rapid closure of CSS and the reorganization of the remaining schools, leading to larger class size. And it will have to be done in a three-month period. So, what happens next? The select board has voted to let town residents decide. Town residents will vote on a tax override at the annual town meeting on May 12th. They will vote again at the town election on May 19th. If a simple majority of residents vote yes both times, taxes will increase to help ensure both schools and town departments have the money they need to fund services. If the majority of residents vote no on either of these initiatives, additional funding will not be available and services will be lost. So, as we've been hearing over the last couple of weeks, you know, this can't be a school issue, it has to be a town issue. So, we strongly believe that. And that's kinda the information we have to date. We have a hearing next Tuesday as well, and that will talk about the revised budgets and more information about that. But I don't know, I'm done, I don't know if you have questions or...
I guess I'll start with the committee. Is there questions? Mika, are you the last person down there?
I have a question. I don't know if we did the calculations on how much that would cost per household.
No, I did not.
Yeah, so, just kind of... Can you talk a little bit about the outplacement reduction? Like, what that means specifically?
Yeah, so, we're saving about $300,000, and we don't have to send students to a district placement that can range anywhere from $70,000 to $200,000 a year. So, we were lucky to get that notice the last week and a half.
And that's confirmed?
That's confirmed, yeah. It is official, they are going back to their home districts. So, we are confident that we can give that up.
And I had asked about, so, looks like the bus route is a go. And then, any update on, like, bus stops? If that could help eliminate or reduce costs there?
So, the one bus is a definite. They're also working on a second bus, excuse me, to see if they can eliminate that. And that's gonna cause more of the bus stops rather than stopping at individual houses. So, they're still pursuing that. We don't have that information yet.
Okay, great, thanks.
Natalie?
So, Amy actually asked my question about the outplacement reduction, but I'm glad to see that we're able to get some of the money back to hopefully help the town decide as well.
Ruby?
Yeah, so, just following up on the outplacement reduction. It's great, obviously, that we can see that savings. But I'm just curious, like, is it possible that we could, like, incur a new outplacement cost during the year?
Absolutely.
But that is true every year.
Yeah.
Right, right, I just wanna kinda keep that in mind. And then, so, I was a little confused about the bus route. So, like, on the slide that shows with no override, what we would lose? You have also elimination of one school. So, that's a second bus route? Is that what you're talking about here, or...?
No, that should've come off there.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
So, I just wanna say, for members, I don't think we had this many people at our last meeting. We had talked about what our request was gonna be from the town, and we were looking at level service. And then, there were some things that we found out might be able to happen. So, the students, the buses, things like that. So, we asked Brian to relook at it and see if we could get our number lower than what it was. And so, that's what we're presenting on here tonight. So, thank you, Brian. I feel like that's pretty impressive.
And that will be the number, no matter what.
Okay.
Those are leaving, no matter what.
Yeah, and that's like $500,000, like, half a million dollars, that we just reduced that by.
So, from us, do you... Are you ready for me to take a public comment now?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. So, I'm gonna start with public comment now. Three folks signed up. So, Eric Weiss, would you like to speak?
Sure, why not?
And thank you for giving us the flexibility to present first.
I'm here, is it on? Yes, it's on. First of all, good evening to everybody. And anybody who doesn't know me, I was chair of school committee years ago. I don't mean to be the old guy in the room, 'cause I'm not, but I wanted to just come and say that when this first started, a lot of people have asked me different questions. I've talked to many different people in town, that's clear. Talked to Brian some, I've talked to others. There was, in my mind, there was no way an override of over 2.1 to 2.5 was gonna make it through town. Something in the $2 million ranges might be tolerable, as long as both sides are willing to make some concessions, which you've proven you can do. What I really wanna say is, the town needs to change its dialogue. We need to change from the term override to investment. This is an investment in the town of Belchertown as a whole. This is not an investment in just the schools. That's the other thing. We've gotta drop the language of schools, and we've got to drop, and just talk about the town, or the community is even better. We're doing this for the community, it is an investment in the community. And for those who think that an override is a temporary measure, they're just flat-out wrong. Two and a half was designed that every once in a while, you had to catch up, because there was no way two and a half was gonna keep up with inflation, and it hasn't. So, it's not a Band-Aid, that is a terrible word to use for two and a half. It's not an override, it's an investment. And it's something the town needs to do. If we're trying to rebrand the town, if we're trying to make Belchertown a place that people wanna come to, we've gotta have good roads, good police, good fire, good school, and it's gotta happen in the right way. And this is one way to do that, to compromise and say, we're making an investment. Everybody in town, whether they like it or not, is gonna be living in town the day after this vote passes. And then, they have to decide what they wanna do. This isn't us against them, this is an investment in town that even the most conservative amongst the people in town have to recognize is something Belchertown needs to do. They can still vote the other way, that's their, that's their right. It doesn't mean I'm wrong or they're wrong, and this doesn't involve fighting or bickering at all. This is coming to compromise, compromise is difficult. The last thing I wanna say is that Belchertown is a place we've all chosen to live for different reasons, but we're all here together, wherever we're coming from. And it's really important that we recognize the value of the community we have. This community offers us all kinds of wonderful things. The schools are part of it, the playground is part of it, the beach is part of it, the pool is part of it, our programs are part of it. You start cutting those pieces away, you're cutting away all the important pieces, all the things that attract people to town, and you're not gonna be able to attract people to town. And that's the wrong method. So, I wanna just close with saying, I appreciate the fact that you and Mr. Cameron moved to try to get close to a half million dollars out of that budget, and that you're willing to go to town meeting with the 1.6 number, or going back to the select board with that. I urge the town on the town side to take a look at this and say, we're gonna round it to 2, 2.1, whatever the final number comes to be, and we're gonna, everybody's gonna stick with that number. And from this point forward, we're all gonna talk about it positively. The town side is making investment, the school side is making investment, and Belchertown is investing in itself, and that's what we should be talking about.
Thank you so much.
$270 is about the average. Back of the envelope calculation, $270 on the average.
Okay.
$270, less than a dollar a day.
Okay, next public speaker I have is Jake Holsberg. Oh, hey, we thought people did it wrong. Would you like to speak? You don't have to.
Hi.
Thanks, Jake.
So, the last time I stood here, I urged a bunch of folks to come to our select board meetings and push for a Prop 2.5, so, thank you. I think that that was really important, and I heard a kid say that he was losing a lot of stuff, and I... It bothered me, to be honest. And so, I think at this point, what we really gotta do is make sure that everyone gets something out of this. I've had conversations across the town, and our fire department's grant-funded. That means that that money's not baked in. You want fire department to show up when your house is on fire? We need to make sure the money gets baked in, so those guys get paid. So, I have a feeling, we're gonna hear very soon, that everyone's gonna benefit from this. Now, will our schools benefit a little more? Yeah. But there's a lot of reasons why we need that right now. And I think there's a lot of evidence that shows that the schools are underfunded. So, I'm hoping that we start to see a real shift in the dialogue around investing in Belchertown and making this town and keeping this town. You know, I think the great thing about our country is actually that everyone always wants the next generation have a better life than ours. And that's what I hope we decide very soon.
Thank you very much. And Gillian Hall?
Alright, I don't think I'm as eloquent a public speaker, but I am a mom in town, and I think I kinda felt the need to come up here and just represent the normal layperson mom who doesn't really get any of this stuff, but is fighting for her babies and investing in the future. But, so, just kind of in... So, again, I'm Gillian Hall, and I just wanna, I'm gonna kinda read through this because it'll be easier for me. But I just wanted to thank y'all for stepping into a role as advocates for children and public education in general. I know many of us are very hopeful, of course, that this override passes, but I think if we, of course, have any chance of succeeding, we, we need to get to those people who have the limited knowledge, who don't understand this. And just, so, you answered a lot of my questions with the presentation, so, thank you for that. That was smart to do that beforehand. But I do think, in general, you know, maybe those on the fence, or those are kind of like definite no, I, I think there's this air of, you know, we need more transparency, we need to fully understand. And your, the presentation was wonderful, like, how do we get that to more people? How do we present that so more people kind of understand what you guys are all working on behind the scenes? And that if there are some preconceived notions out there of, you know, why haven't they done this, or X, Y, and Z, just to really explain that, and just like I said, kinda get to those, you know, voters who might be questioning. I did wanna say, so, I think, you know, this idea of, I attended the last two select board meetings, and undoubtedly, there was, there was some tension, there was, it was palpable. And I just think as kind of a towns person coming into those meetings, it obviously puts off this air of, where's the cooperation, where's the community? So, to see that number come down, I think that was really, it was just really heartening, I think, for the whole town to see that there's this air of cooperation in good faith, like, let's work together and figure this out. So, I thought that was great. So, again, just kind of this idea, how can we be more transparent? Get to the normal layperson towns person who isn't really watching everything or coming to all the meetings. I actually expected to see more people here tonight, even just with everything that is going on and how, you know, and yes, right. Perfect, and that, and that's probably true, too. So, you guys kinda spoke to, you know, the aftermath of a, of a, of a yes or a no, and what that might look like. I know just, and this came up for me, too, with the vote on Javish. Just, okay, sounds good, but also that things feel kind of vague. And I'm just really speaking as somebody who wants this override to pass, so what do people need to hear and see? So, if this is a yes, yeah, okay, yeah, it's not a Band-Aid, it is an investment, I love that. But what does, what does it look like afterwards so that we don't find ourselves here again? Where else, you know, I think even kind of in cutting costs, that all looked really good. But, like, tell us exactly what was done, what was...
I'm gonna have to have you finish up your idea, 'cause that was your three minutes.
Oh, wow, look at that. Well, I do wanna share something for Sarah Hartman, 'cause she did ask me to. So, she just wanted to say if that's okay. So, I'm just gonna speak for another mom, I can't?
You have 30 seconds.
So, cutthroat, okay. "I think we all want to know what this looks like for our music department if the override passes and in the alternate. In addition, I think reiteration of how important music and the acts are motivating students to attend school, find their place in school, enrich their academics." Sorry, Sarah, that's it. Sorry, Sarah, that's, and should we be, should that be, cut be to start in sixth or seventh? We should not have the program we do. It's proven the younger, the child, the easier they pick the music. So that's just for someone who couldn't be here. Okay, thank you, sorry.
That's okay. It's okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? If you could please stand up and state your name.
Marilyn Decker, 35 Granby Road. First off, I want to really commend you for bringing the number down. I think that was great, that was something I was really concerned about. I also, I don't know who gave the dollar figure, but that is something that I think many of us are really, need to know. And particularly with, you know, all the talk of social security being messed up and all that sort of stuff. So if we can get that dollar figure, the price per thousand, I sent an email out tonight to Brian and to the select board, just asking what that would be like. But I want to commend you for the work that you've done since the last meeting, so thank you.
Thank you. I saw a couple of hands go up when I asked. Please. And if you would please state your name.
Sure. Hi, good evening, Marla Lindsay. I agree with what everybody has said tonight, and especially Eric, in trying to unite us as a town, and moving forward, and I think you were very eloquent. I think putting this into language that everybody in the town can understand, soundbites, I think are really, going to be really important. And I really appreciate your efforts to get the number down. It's hard, and I don't, I didn't want to say at the last school committee meeting that we need to cut anything, because I love our program. But I wanted to say, I went to the Ways and Means Committee meeting this week, and, boy, that was a slog, seven hours of testimony. And I took some notes. I didn't understand all of it, but one of the things that the Secretary of Education talked about when they presented their budget was that there would be these 100% transportation reimbursements, and non-resident vocational transportation reimbursements, and circuit-breaker funds. So this is less of a public comment, and more of a question to you, is how does that apply, and is that already accounted for in the reductions? And if it isn't, could you do that before this goes to the town meeting? So, I love that the number is below 2 million. I think anything that we can do to reduce it even more, without making those really hard cuts to student-facing staff, and everything that's important to the quality of the school system. But I just wanted to say thank you, and hopefully you might have some answers to those questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So we don't answer in public comment, but I did see Brian write it down, and we will talk about it. Is there anyone else? Please.
Hi, my name is Terry, Terry Puzbiloit. I just have a couple comments. Number one, I'm concerned, like, if the two and a half does not pass, how quick is that gonna affect everybody along the way? What's the timeline on that? I don't want to look at the negative thing, but it might be something to plan in the future, to say, what's gonna happen on that one? Number two, I meant to say, thank you very much for all your hard work, because I admire people who, I used to do some townwork, and the town and the investment that you guys do is just amazing, so I thank you. The other thing is, I wrote to Representative Saunders, and he enlightened me in the fact that he was, he worked with his colleagues to maintain, I'm using his words, home harmless in the provision, so that Belchertown does not lose any money in the school. But he said he was working specifically on areas to increase the inflation factor for the school, and he's increasing, he's looking at increase in special education circuit-breaker reimbursement, and he said he's working on increasing the amount of funding, too, and adjusting the definition of rural school district, including Belchertown. I'm sure you must have heard from him already, but I don't know if the rest of the town has heard. But it's amazing how the representatives have been working, which I had no idea this extra work was happening. And my third thing is, if we're thinking down the future, if we ever think about getting some solar panels, and reducing some of our elect, we just got our solar panels tonight, today, so. It does, and I've seen people have solar panels, and it reduces your cost tremendously, and it might just help the whole town in that whole investment part of it. So thank you, again.
So we've had one, two, three, four, five, six comments, so is there anyone else who would like to speak? Casey, are you gonna speak? Of course she is.
I just have one more good question, I guess, but hopefully I'll pull up. Hello, I am Casey Kibbe. I'm a teacher and resident in town. I guess, I was just, one thing that I, I know a lot of people are numbers people, and data people, and those things I feel like have really helped, the seeing the cost per pupil, and seeing, you know, the numbers of making cuts and transparency. I feel, though, I've heard a lot lately about, I think a lot of people's reservation about the override is the thing of, oh, well, Belchertown's taxes are the highest. When I've looked at things on my quick Google searches, that's what I appear to be untrue, and I didn't know if your awesome data team and research people could put something out that is helpful to the average person to see that Belchertown is not in the highest taxes. I feel like that would be good information. I was, I didn't know if we could do that.
Thank you so much. What does that say, Sean?
It's just, he has to restart his computer. It's been reminding him every minute.
Okay. Online people, I'm so sorry. Okay, if there are folks online who want to speak, I am happy to hear from two of them. I would need for you to activate your camera, or to not, turn on your camera, like you're video gaming, activate your camera. Oh, I'm sorry, three. I don't see any cameras anywhere. I don't know if they were accidentally unmuted. Oh, there we go, there's someone. Crystal, if you could please unmute yourself, so we can hear you.
Yes, hi.
Hi. Please start with your full name.
Can you hear me?
Yes, but we need your full name.
Oh, sorry, Crystal Debray?
Perfect.
Hello. So, I just wanted to respond to that other, this could be there. I do actually have those numbers of the tax, of how we are comparing for the taxes. So we do have that information, and, you know, it's, it's where we are in the middle of the road, but we are at the lower end of our category of 6,000 to 10,500. And also, we are on the lower end of the, the per, what's it called? The per, the taxes per income, and the taxes per health value, we're at the lower end of that. And I have all of that data set and ready to go. Very well done.
Thank you so much. All right. Anyone else online? Thank you, Crystal. Okay, I'm not seeing anybody rush to their cameras, so with that, I'm gonna close the public comment period, and the committee can discuss some of your questions. I know the solar panel question has been asked to me a lot, and when we studied the new building, the town was in a contract with a solar farm, and so we could not put solar panels on our buildings at least yet. So, I don't want anyone to think we're stalling on that, that's just what it is. Okay, Brian wrote everything down.
I did hear about the circuit breaker and the reimbursement for transportation to non, is Mark here? Oh, there he is. That's all I know. I don't even know if it's going to be a thing or not. I can tell you now, we get reimbursed for circuit breaker. If you spend so much above the cap that the state gives you each year, they reimburse you a percentage of that. We do apply for that, and, Mark, do you remember what it was last year, reimbursement?
The mic?
Yes, I think it was like seven, I think.
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying to actually look on the website now, because we get so into the weeds with the actual number, that we don't, you forget about the percentage. But what happens with circuit breaker is, it's called extraordinary relief, and it's for extra expenses for, for special education students, and what happens is, once you get four times the per pupil expense for the district, that's when any expenses over that get kind of put together, and then the state comes up with a percentage of those funds that they will reimburse. And like I said, I used to know what it was for this year, but it's been like almost a year since, since we talked about it. So I would look it up, but they're doing, the state's doing maintenance on their system right now. But it ranges from like, it's been like 73%, 85%, it's been as low as 65% in the past. So what they're talking about is trying to increase that percentage, because the ideal is that you have 100% reimbursement for those costs, because as it is, you know, the district is on the hook for four times the per pupil cost, and so everything above that, if you could get reimbursed 100%, obviously that's extra money. But the other thing you have to keep in mind is, as we go through the budget process, this is Ways and Means talking about things they might be able to do with the budget, but we have, we have the governor's budget, then there's, the House comes up with their version of the budget, then the Senate, and then this conference committee, which tries to amalgamate all of those and come up with a compromise. So, at this point, it's too early to tell what that percentage might be, so it's not something we can plan for. We generally plan for the same circuit breaker reimbursement that the district got in FY25, and that's how we budgeted. As for the transportation reimbursement, that's typically, and I don't know specifically, because I wasn't at that meeting, but that's typically reimbursement for things like homeless, you know, transportation for homeless kids that have to go various places. There is also transportation reimbursement in regional school districts, so I'm not sure exactly what they are talking about. But the reimbursement for expenses, extraordinary expenses we have for like homeless students, generally, I have to say, what happens is that generally comes in after the end of the fiscal year, and what happens is, once you receive a revenue at the end of the fiscal year, it reverts to the town. So when those monies have come in, they've actually reverted to the town's general fund versus the school, which is unfortunate, but it's the way the state basically handles their reimbursements. And then for the non-resident vocational tuition, I'm not, I have to know more about that. I'm not sure if they're talking about the situation with Smith-Vogue. I mean, that's, that would be where, you know, we have students which we budget for, because Pathfinder is a town-side expense, because that is, that's the vocational school for this district. But if you are in a program that they don't offer, and you go to Smith-Vogue, and that's tuitions that the school budget handles. So I, I want to learn a little more about what that could potentially be, but again, you have to realize that, you know, this is a process that they're discussing, but we have to go through three more iterations of a budget before we get any solid information as to what those numbers are. I hope that helped answer the question.
Can you just mention about hold harmless, while you're doing a good job down there?
Well, hold harmless is basically, it's a, it's basically a calculation that the state set up, DESI set up, the Department of Education, for, for districts like Belchertown and many others, where you have a declining population in students, so that you don't lose funds. They hold you harmless, so that generally they do a calculation, you know, per pupil, and that's how much they give you, but they also, you know, they put in a, basically a factor that you will never get less than what you got the prior year, even if your student population declines. And usually they give you like, a little boost, like $115 this year per student, that you get additionally for each student, so that your actual Chapter 70 reimbursement goes up. So it's a way to keep Chapter 70 from declining, when you have a declining student population, because obviously, you know, even if you lose students, you're not immediately gonna lose teachers, and you're still gonna have inflationary expenses. So it's a way to try to help mitigate some of the, I guess, the negative impacts of declining enrollment.
And Tracy talked about that in our Chapter 70 presentation, and I think for quite a few years, we've been held harmless.
Yeah, we have.
So it's, it's been in our benefit.
And the funding rural schools that you spoke to Representative Saunders with, he mentioned that to us as well, when he was looking at the formula regarding that, but we haven't heard anything on that.
So I will say, we have good representatives in Senator Olivera and Representative Saunders. I feel like they really advocate for us in these things, but I also feel like these things are very slow to change, and I think the secretary in that meeting said, "It's not changing for this year, like you're getting what you're getting." So I didn't see the meeting myself. I did follow up on it, and I don't have very much hope that that's gonna like, solve any problems immediately. I know it's scheduled to be reviewed, Chapter 70, do you remember when? In two to three years or something? Which doesn't help us right now, but, you know, it is something on people's minds.
I will just say, because I was there on Monday, and I watched the, a good majority of it the rest of the day, and it was not optimistic, unfortunately. I did feel like Senator Olivera advocated strongly for us, but, you know, the response was not optimistic.
So, okay. Is there anything else?
Those were all the questions.
Okay. There was a question about music, what's gonna happen to music with or without? We kind of cut her off quickly. So, if an override doesn't happen, that's where the cuts are gonna come in, and it's gonna be the cuts we talked about, there will be cuts to the performing arts program. If the override happens, then that's not on the list of anything affected, so that's gonna stay as it is right now. Does that answer your question? Was, who asked this?
It was online.
Oh.
Was it?
No.
I'm sorry, wait.
Can I?
It wasn't my question, but I do feel like that answer feels, they seem to be, just on my hands, but.
I think, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Can I follow up on that? So, I think, you know, I can certainly understand that, like, we have to go into it, we're presenting an override number, and that we have to go into it knowing that, like, it could be a yes, it could be a no, and that have a clear understanding of what a no is also helps us get a yes, so it says, this is what's at stake. And so I think it would be helpful to know sort of when we'll know that.
When you'll know.
What's at stake? What's the, what's a yes versus a no going to be, specifically?
Well, I think it goes back to the presentation that is addressed in here, that...
But I mean, in terms of details, will we have that at the budget hearing?
Well, I think that's a discussion we're, we're gonna have to talk about. Do we want to tell people that they don't have jobs, and then a week later tell them they do have jobs?
Well, I guess maybe the question is, what information will we have, and when? Because we do, and I'm just expressing my opinion, I don't know how others feel, that sort of, I think it's hard to ask for a yes if people don't know what's at stake.
I guess I don't, I don't know how to be any clearer, it's 30-plus positions, it's all of those things.
I think folks want to know what's 30.
Yeah.
Again, I'm sorry to talk, I know to talk about this.
If you give me the directive to tell people what those positions are now.
I'm not giving any, I just, I'm just here for everybody else.
No, I think, I think as a committee, we need to decide.
Like, what is it that we're all, how do others feel about it? I'm just expressing my opinion.
So if, if me, I'm an eighth-grade basket weaving teacher, right, and you tell me this week, well, my position might be on the chopping block if this override doesn't go, I may jump the gun and go apply to another district that's hiring a basket weaving teacher, even though I'm really good. But at the same time, if 50 people's kids are in basket weaving, and they love basket weaving, and don't want to lose basket weaving, that might help encourage them to vote for the override. So, how do other committee members feel?
I just, this district is small enough, where if you're saying you're cutting a certain position, then everyone knows who it is, and I, we haven't really given those employees notice, so.
I totally get, and I, like, I get why people would want to know what the specifics are, but hopefully we can all see, like, how that's a tough position to be in, because if specifics are given, then they're out there. And that means that, I mean, if I was the basket weaving teacher, I'd be like, okay, well, maybe I'm not gonna stick around, I'm gonna start applying right now, because I need to make sure that my job is secure. I need to make sure that my job is secure. So I think as much as we could give without being too specific maybe, you know, about like this actual position is what would be cut. I mean, like closure of the pool, like that's a pretty obvious, specific thing that we could mention. But I understand when it's protecting specific personnel. I guess, does this, does this list, it doesn't say it here and I know we talked about it before, but this does mean closing cold spring. Is that true?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Natalie, do you have an opinion?
Yeah.
Down at the bottom.
Oh, I'm sorry, it does say it. You're right, you're right.
Could you repeat that?
You were right. It's at the bottom. You're wrong.
And I will just tell you from my perspective, but I will do what the committee wants to do. Once you tell people, you know, and I know this is tough because we went through this last year, I, I felt like I needed to tell every teacher personally because this is a thing. I went to every school, I did it after school. Next thing I know, I was on Facebook and I did it during the day and all this thing happened, whatever, I don't care about that. But we had a lot of emotions in the classroom. We had a lot of students that were being dragged into it. And I, I respect that people want to know and I understand that. I just, I just think it's not going to be a very conducive educational environment within the schools. Now, on the other hand, I get it. We usually tell people in April anyway what it is. Now we're basically saying, we're not going to know until May 17th.
Is there a date we have to tell them by?
By June. So I get both sides. I'm just trying, I just, you know, I get it. I just would hate for someone to tell me I don't have a job and then you're going to come back next week and say, just kidding, you're going to get to stay.
So I think there's two sides of this, right? If, I mean, if we wait and still have to lay them off, we're still going to have that disruption. The students affected, all of that, it's still going to happen.
You're not going to have it right now.
No, we're not going to have it right now, but maybe right now that disruption is going to help us get out the vote.
Well, I think you have to decide what the purpose is here.
Well, let's hear it, Natalie.
I've, I've just talked to a lot of like parents in town and they just, they, they want to know more. They want to, instead of just seeing reduction of extracurriculars, clubs and our athletics, they want specifics. It doesn't have to be like, oh, this teacher in this grade is going to get cut. They want to know, they want to be informed. And I understand where they're coming from because as a parent perspective with having my child in the schools, I would want to know that too. And I know it's not easy for us to just be like, okay, X, Y, and Z is going to get cut. Like it's going to cause conflict, it's going to cause uncomfortable conversations. But if that's going to help people out there be able to vote with more knowledge, then I'd say we do it.
So I think my opinion is the same way. Like I, I, I want, I want people to come out and vote. And when we just say 30 positions, it's like, well, what does that mean? And I don't necessarily want to say like, Brian Cameron, you'll be gone. Like I don't want to have to say that.
Well, once we identify them, people are going to know who they are. And then before I identify them, I would like to have the opportunity to talk to them.
No, 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 I get that.
Or administrators. So there's no, there's no, there's no way of saying, you know, a, we're taking a K classroom away. Okay, people know whoever's the least singular teacher is gone.
Right.
You know, and then we have the bumping. So I get it. But there's no real, if we're going to do it, let's do it.
Yeah, I think just another thing that I've been hearing and I agree with is it feels like a lack of transparency if you're not disclosing the specifics to what this entails. So while I understand like, like I said, like, you know, people could go out and look for other positions. I mean, maybe that's what we need to do, but I think, I think the transparency will help. I think people need to know what's at stake. I mean, I think it's hard to ask for it without knowing exactly what's at stake. And, you know, just people in general in town are saying, okay, well, you're giving a vague budget of things. Okay, then here, here is, here is everything that would be cut.
And I do feel like last year at our budget hearing, didn't we know specifically what was going? Like, I feel like we heard from a lot of the chorus people, the music chorus people that they knew chorus was going. Like I remember hearing from students how important chorus was to them.
Yeah, that was the programs though, right? Listen, I have no problem. If you want me to do it, just let me know.
All right, let's, this is not an official vote. I'm sorry, if I start taking public comment, then it's going to get hoopla crazy. So this is not an official vote, but let's tell Brian what we think. We'll go down. Mika?
I think that is going to be important that the staff know and they should know first. If that means, you know, how many or which positions are going to be in which building or how many positions are in each building or if we're going to be very detailed, I think the staff needs to know first. And I know there's a date, there's a date which, that has to be known for the staff. But I think if we're going to make it public, then I would, I would not want to find out on the news or some other way.
No, I think Brian said he definitely will. But do we want Brian to tell us in the budget hearing what exactly we're losing? Or do we want to keep it vague right now and just say 30 positions?
I think it would help people when it comes to the vote, for them to know exactly what is at stake.
Okay. So do we want to know like which 30 positions was affected? Just yes or no?
Yes.
Yes? Amy?
Mm-hmm.
Ruby?
Yeah.
I'm a yes too. So, I'm sorry.
You don't have to be sorry.
I know that's not the way you want us to go, but I understand the need to know.
I hope you all have your phones on when we need you.
I also think it's really important that the teachers know we are advocating for them. We think that they should know now because we think that that's going to help in the long run.
I know you're not taking public comment. Can I just make one quick statement and then I'll end it for you?
You got to go back to Jake.
It's up to the committee.
If I listen to you, then I got to go to everybody, but I will, go ahead.
If we're going to ask the town for $1.6 million investment and you have to be clear with the town what they're not going to get if they don't make that move.
Right, yeah. Jake, did you have one thing to say?
I was going to say, I think you should tell the people it's human. You should agree on whether you have to help them. But everyone has time to do the right thing.
So, Casey?
As an employee, I think I would much rather hear it from my boss than in a public way. I think a lot of times that when you look at these scenarios, you look at positions and it's quite easy sometimes to forget that I'm a mother, I have children on my own to feed, I have to plan for my own family. Whereas I would love to have the inheritance bliss and not know if I'm being cut until May 19th or whatever. I also need to be proactive for my own children and what, you know.
Agreed.
So that I, that way I can plan for my own family's future. And to me, I know, you know, you said some teachers might jump ship or I get that. But as for me, if you told me, hey, you might be losing your job and then two weeks later you said to me, just kidding, no you're not, I'd be open to vote.
Right.
But this is where I want to be.
I think, I just want to be clear, nobody wanted Brian to just tell us first and not them.
Yeah, that was never...
A teacher in town's perspective.
Yeah. No, I get where you're coming from.
That's what I mean. I don't, you know, I'm like, if I could raise that news to my own family, I'd like to do it myself at first instead of in a public setting or my neighbors or whatever.
All right. So now for the committee, this number, the 1.636, 236.
Can I just ask a question?
Yes.
I want to make sure I have my directive. So on next Tuesday, you want specific positions? Just because I got, that means we got to tell people tomorrow and Monday.
I, I think that, yes.
And I'm okay with that. I just want to make sure.
I think it's better for them to know because even as Casey said, if we tell them, it's not a, you're, Casey, I'm going to use you, I'm sorry, you're right there. It's not a, you're getting laid off. It's a, I want you to know this is a potential. We don't know yet, nobody knows yet. But I would rather feel more comfortable with them knowing than...
There won't be speculation.
They're going to know. I'm just going to tell you.
The application process, they take a mile. So even if people do, you know, if you're frozen, you know, the water and looking elsewhere, I don't think that process would be quick.
I've also followed in the news, there's a lot of places going through that, so...
Yeah, there are a lot of places. And I'm not opposed to it. I am a...
It's also was the best time to find the justice.
All right. So with that, the committee now, we need to vote on this 1.636, 236 number.
Yep.
Okay? Is there a motion about this?
I just, quick question.
Can you save it for discussion?
Yes.
Okay. So is there a motion about this?
Motion to approve.
All right, I'll make the motion. To give the town the number 1,636,236 dollars is the number the school committee is asking for.
You're reducing from the budget.
Reducing from the budget.
Second.
Okay. Discussion, Amy?
Yes. So with the bus discussion that's still not fully completed, would we change this number if we do find out that we can reduce another bus or create bus stops?
I would have to figure out who, like the timing for this to go on the war.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure how that would.
Know that, but I think it's a conversation piece.
So is, we could vote on this with the caveat that we might go lower if we find out more information?
So we vote on this and they still haven't given us our full like state numbers yet? Like when we have town meeting, they're still figuring things out?
Right.
So there's always a little bit of fluctuation.
Yeah, so just, just to be clear too, in the scheme of things that, sorry. Our town allocation in December was 33,851,133. It is now with the reduction of Pathfinder and some kind of, what's that called? Fees.
Increased expenses and fixed costs on the town side.
Yeah, increased. Our number has gone up to 33,844,623. So we have lost $13,000.
Wait, but they said at the meeting, like we had our number and we were getting money back because of Pathfinder. Why did it go in the wrong direction?
It did go in the wrong direction.
Yes, I guess there's some fixed costs that were added to the number that came in afterwards.
I feel like that information wasn't actually given to us.
Well, Natalie and I had both written it down and then we were confused at the last meeting.
Yeah, I remember that and I thought we did it something wrong.
The Pathfinder assessment came in last, but yet our, our allocation should have gone up, but it went down.
Right. But just keep in mind, and I can, I reached out for some details. The 10, that $10,000, part of it goes into stabilization, part of it goes into OPEB.
OPEB.
OPEB. And then whatever fixed costs they have in addition, a percentage of that comes out. So I just got this number today and it's 33,844,623.
Okay.
So that's another 13,000 we got to come up with.
But that's in the...
Is that included in our 1636 number?
Yes.
Okay. So this is still the number we're asking for. All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
All right.
All right, with that, I'm pretty sure there's nothing else. Oh, any questions from the media?